Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call the March 16 of 2021 City of Cortland Common Council Meeting. Oh, before I call the order, I'm gonna back up. We have a public hearing. And the first, we have three. The first public hearing is on the community impact of the 2016 CDBG infrastructure grant that provided funding for the replacement of the Clinton Avenue water main. Uh, I'm gonna call the public hearing officially open. And I'm gonna open up the chat box. If there is anybody present that would like to speak, you can either raise your hand virtually. You can raise your hand really, which might be difficult, or give me your name in the chat box. A reminder, we ask that people have their name for their moniker here. So when we're attending council meetings, we'd like to know who is in attendance, so please have a name. And is there anybody present that would like to speak for our first public hearing? This is the community impact of 2016 CDBG infrastructure grant, and this provided funding for the replacement of the Clinton Avenue water main. I would assume and hope that any comments would be positive because replacing water mains is a very positive thing.
Mayor, I hate to interrupt. We have two require, we have two requirements that Scott has to take, has to do to inform the public of the project and inform the public of the status of the project in order to meet the CGV requirements.
Very good. So I will ask Scott Berto, if you can explain a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, just to give everybody an update, this is a 2016 project that, uh, Toma wrote. It was a $750,000 um, CDBG grant, and we did utilize an additional approximately $280,000 of program income from the city's micro loan enterprise. Um, the project, uh, was completed by at-hand construction, um, with the 2016 money. Um, they installed approximately 300, or 3,623 feet of new water main along Clinton Avenue. Um, and include in replacing about 865 linear feet of copper service lines to residents. Um, they installed 50 new curb stops, uh, with shut-off boxes, um, nine new fire hydrants, and 27 new, um, gate valves. Um, they, they also, uh, did about 20, 100 linear feet of temporary asphalt um, through the winter of that first year. And then, uh, they came back the following year and completed it with 2018 funds. Uh, in an upcoming meeting, we'll have another public hearing to discuss the 2018 funds and, and the utilization of those. But, uh, for the 16 grant, that's what they were able to do, uh, and utilize those funds for along Clinton Avenue. Um, so if anybody has any comments or, or questions on that, I gladly answer them.
First call, second call. Are there any public comments? And last chance, speak now or hold your peace. Comments on the CDBG infrastructure grant, and we've replaced a more than just pipes, a lot of pipe, and then a little bit more. Keep water flowing into homes and businesses. And having nobody present that wants to speak during the public hearing, we'll call it officially closed. And we do have two more public hearings. It should be fairly quick, could be fairly quick. First one, public hearing on extending the mayor's term from two to four years. And the floor is now open. Is there anybody present that would like to speak on the potential to extend the term for the mayor and the city of Cortland from two years to four years? And clarification, that would not take place this upcoming term. It would not start January 1st. It would take place in the, after the next election. Brian.
Twenty-three elections. Bill Carpenter.
It's just the mayor and not the council?
We've got two separate public hearings. This first one is for the mayor, and then the next one will be for council terms.
Okay, alright, sorry.
Oh, no worries. So again, if you're present and would like to speak, you can put your name in the chat. Can raise your hand virtually, if you know how to do that little hand, or you can do what Troy is doing and raising his hand. Troy?
I just think we ought to clarify that a little bit more, Brian. If this is just for us to prove this, that if we do approve this tonight, it'll go on the ballot for the, uh, the voters to have the final say in this. That was the agreement.
Yeah, thi- this is not to be determined today. This is opportunity for feedback, and at the end of the day, council will be asked if they want to put this on the ballot for the fall, or the general public would be voting aye. Final call. Anybody present to speak extending mayor's term from two years to four? We'll call the public hearing closed and open the third and final public hearing, extending the council person's term to four years. And similar to the mayor's, it would not take place. There would be a public referendum this fall, and all registered voters in Cortland would be able to vote if this is put forward by council, and it would not change in this fall's election, but two years from now. But the floor is open. If there's anybody that would like to comment. Second call. Would require a local law to exchange the terms from two to four years. Last call, changing terms from two to four years. Hearing no comments. Public hearing is officially closed. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. And now we'd like to call the meeting to order. I am muting everybody because we are going to ask you all to please rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Perfect height as possible. There we go. Public comments. If there is anybody present that would like to take the opportunity to address council, we have the uh, opportunity for public comments. We ask that comments are directed to the council as a whole, uh, that they deal with issues that the city council can deal with, and that they are limited to three minutes in length. So similar to how we asked for people to be able to raise their hand, either virtually, in person, or share your name via chat. And seeing none. Moving on from public comments. I have a couple of items of business. And the first one. We're gonna build up here. Let's start off with a celebration, a recognition. Joseph Prezioso. So whereas Joseph Prezioso is a lifelong resident of the city of Cortland, residing on Lansing Avenue. And whereas Mr. Prezioso served the city of Cortland as a career firefighter, and he was with the Cortland Fire Department from September of 1958 through October of 1987, and he served on the Fire Commission for the city of Cortland from 1994 through 2006. And Mr. Prezioso yesterday celebrated his 95th birthday. I'd like to recognize Mr. Prezioso, thank him for his fine work and service, both as an employee and as a volunteer for the city, and to congratulate him on his long life, which was an outstanding achievement, and to commend him for his many years of service to the public. Um, there's a lot of microphones off, but round of applause for Mr. Prezioso.
Happy birthday, sir.
And 95 is a couple of years older than I. Congratulations. I hope you had a wonderful birthday. And covering some business, I'd like to remind the public. Toma Development, the city is collaborating with Toma Development, and we are taking pre-applications for small business program loans. And we need greater participation in order for this application process to be successful. We have, I believe it's close to 30 or more pre-applications that have gone out. People have asked for them, but we need to get those back. So if you've already asked for a pre-application and received one, please complete it. If you have not, and you have an outstanding small business idea, or even a pretty good one, please contact Toma Development because we want to have our application in sooner as opposed to later. Um, and like to continue to share this publicly because we need to show that there is a demand, and there's some great potential, which we know there is, in order for us to potentially be successful with these grant applications. I have another proclamation to read, and this is with regard to fair housing policy. And March is Fair Housing Month. So whereas in accordance with Title VIII Fair Housing Policy and the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988, the month of April for 2021 has been designated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity as Fair Housing Months. So therefore, be it resolved, the city common council from Cortland hereby declares and proclaims April is Fair Housing Month in the city of Cortland. And if there are issues or concerns, our Fair Housing Officer, Bob Ray, is able to assist, but we advocate and expect everybody to have the right to equal and fair housing. I have two asks for council and then one more presentation virtually that I'd like to make. Two asks for council after agenda item number one. If we can adjourn into executive session for a brief discussion. So I'm gonna ask council if we can go into executive session. Are there any objections? After agenda item number one. And then after agenda item number 10, a second executive session. So agenda, the first executive session would be with regard to uh, contracts with an individual. And then the executive session after agenda item number 10 would be a contractual agreement with another municipality. Um, any disagreements, any concerns from council? Two separate items, two separate discussions.
No.
Very good. Thank you, John. And the last bit of business during the mayor's report. Thirty-seven years is a fair amount of time. However, we'd like to take the opportunity, uh, to recognize our outgoing police chief, F. Michael Catalano. After 37 years of dedicated service, honorable and distinguished service to the city Police Department in the city of New York, chief is retiring, and his absolute last day is March 26th of 2021. So it's not a virtual plaque. I'm having a hard time figuring out how to get it on the screen. But we've got a little something for chief, and it says in deep appreciation because, uh, he, over 37 years, that's a lot of different tasks. There's a lot of different challenges that have come forward. And I've had the good fortune of, uh, being mayor for the past 10 years. And chief has been a great person to work with. He always has the best interests of the community at heart. He's been willing to listen, to adapt as times have changed. And Chief Catalano, it is with extreme well wishes that myself and council uh, sad with your departure, but very pleased for you and your family, and hopefully you enjoy retirement. Chief, do you have any words that you'd like to share with everybody?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, 37 years, 41 altogether is quite a long time. I never thought I'd have to say my last goodbyes to the council, uh, virtually, um, on a computer. I'd always thought it would be a nice uh, face-to-face meeting as usual, but, um, I have no regrets whatsoever. It's been a, a great run with the city of Portland and, and the Portland Police Department. Um, the city government, the alderman, the mayor have always been supportive of the police department and of me, and to us. So there, there's, there's no complaints there. And on the flip side, uh, we have a very professional department. Um, one of the best in New York, uh, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as a lot of people are concerned. And that this doesn't happen by chance. I was handed a very good department in good shape by, uh, Chief Nichols at the time. And it was my goal to, uh, expand on that and make it even better yet, and then hand it over to the next chief, the way that it was handed over to me. And that will be Paul Sandy, and I think I've done that. But the new leadership, uh, it has to happen. Um, it's good timing. There's so many changes. Uh, 2020, our last year, has been something that I've never experienced in my life. Um, I'm sure everybody feels that way. Police chief, it's just been one thing upon another, upon another. But we, we got through it. We're getting through it, and we're moving forward. And, and we will continue to move forward, and I will always be there, um, for the next chief, Chief Sandy, if he has any, um, issues or concerns or questions, um, I'll be available. I'm not going anywhere. I'm staying right here in Cortland, uh, where I grew up. And I just want to say it's been an honor, and thank you for letting me, uh, serve the citizens of Cortland and being your police chief for the last almost 12 years.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, could I, can I say a few words?
Bill Carpenter. You deserve it.
I, uh, many of you don't know, but I started, uh, police work in 1987. And Catalano, Chief Catalano was my training officer. And, uh, his even temper, his demeanor. He's always led the department as a sergeant, a lieutenant, deputy chief-in-chief with honor and dignity. And he was, he's been a great leader for the department, and, uh, I want to thank him, thank him for everything he's done and his leadership, and as a friend.
Thank you, Bill. I was glad you didn't go back too far.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Say, I don't, 87, that's pretty close. 84. It's a long and storied career.
And chief, I, I want to say, I wish you were right. I wish we could have done this face-to-face. But, um, you know, at least we're getting to give you a send-off, and I wish you all the best to retirement. Let me tell you, it's not overrated. It'll take you a while to get used to it, but you'll enjoy it once you get, once you get used to it. And, uh, I appreciate the fact that, uh, you, you had an open door. Well, the last year, you had an open phone. Whenever I had a question or a concern, you were always there, willing to, to answer my questions and work with me, and I certainly appreciate that. So best of luck, best wishes to you, chief.
Thank you. Wouldn't have held it any other way.
Your unusual circumstances, but you've helped us all the way through. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Minutes from our last meeting. Our minutes from the meeting, March 2nd of 2021. Like to entertain a motion to file the minutes as is. Bill Carpenter, do we have support? John Bennett, are there any concerns or questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say aye. Give me a wave.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? And we'll file the minutes. Agenda item number one, consideration of a resolution to approve an exotic pet permit for Paige Opera to have five chickens um, on Elm Street. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Tom Michaels, discussion.
Well, I did, I did reach out to, uh, Paige and Scott. Uh, they have not purchased the chickens yet. Uh, in lieu of, uh, uh, the resolution that's pending tonight. But, uh, I told them that, uh, uh, that they have to proceed to move forward. Uh, I will do a, a final inspection, uh, later on, once they, uh, purchased their chicken coop as well as, uh, been able to, uh, get the chickens together and the fence up. I did point out to them that, uh, they do have a bald eagle that, uh, is in the area, and, uh, uh, bald eagles do like chicken. So I told them to be on the lookout, uh, for the eagle. But, uh, other than that, uh, they seem like a nice family and, uh, uh, pretty responsible. Uh, they're gonna purchase these birds, um, almost full grown as they're, they're already, already considered layers. They're not chicks. So if they, they have a better chance of survival, uh, this time of year.
Good.
Did either you or they, um, talk to other neighbors? I see that we have a letter from a neighbor, and that's great. But I'm wondering if other neighbors were contacted.
Uh, they only have the neighbor, neighbor on the one side. Uh, the, the park borders, uh, them on the other side.
Okay.
Uh, so to answer your question, uh, yes. Uh, we did, we did look into that.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And I am. I, I've had a restructuring on my screen, so I'm trying to make sure that we still have everybody in attendance. Oh. Have assigned breakout rooms for council. We need a motion to adjourn into executive session. I think people are already going. Cat, we have a second? Tom?
You're losing as quick.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The two of us.
Brian announced that there'll probably be action taken afterwards.
Thank you. Yes, we, I anticipate action after the executive session. Tom and Cat, let's go. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session. Uh, Cat McCarthy, second. Bill Carpenter, all those in favor of exiting executive session, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. So agenda item number two, consideration of resolution to lift the hiring freeze for a new police chief. Motion to consider. Katie Siliman, second. Tom Michaels, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda item number three, consideration of a resolution to approve the mayor's recommendation of Paul Sandy for police chief. Bruce Titler, second. John Bennett, discussion.
Congratulations, Paul.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Paul.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you.
Am I correct? There are none in opposition, correct? Make sure that's for the public record.
Oh.
Not even John?
It was unanimous.
Tough crowd. Agenda item number four, consideration of a resolution author, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Paul Sandy to be the chief of police for the city of Cortland. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Uh, Tom Michaels, discussion.
This will be the third police chief that I've had the opportunity to, uh, uh, serve with while sitting on the council.
Nice.
You know what? Me too, Tom, now that I think about it. You're right, yeah.
You guys better stop breaking them.
And they just keep getting better. Good one, Paul.
Oh, these are gonna be fun minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It carries.
Yay.
Paul Sandy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Paul.
Paul.
I, I'd like to.
Say a few words.
I was just gonna say, I'd like to cede the floor to Paul if it meets with council approval.
Yes.
Yes.
Chief Sandy.
I would like to thank the police commission, the citizen panel, Mayor Tobin, and the common council for the faith and confidence they have in my ability to lead the Cortland City Police Department as the new chief. This is the culmination of decades of commitment, dedication, and loyalty, not only to this agency, but to the citizens of this community. I give you my word. I will work diligently towards the continued professional development of the men and women of the Cortland City Police Department, and the promotion of a community where every citizen knows that they are respected and will be treated equally under the law. I will be your ambassador, and I will make you proud.
You're here.
Alright, chief.
Thank you.
Well deserved. So I have a question here. Who do we call chief until, uh, the, the other chief leaves?
They're always a chief.
I wouldn't want to say old chief. I'd say former chief.
Older. I still call, I still call Jim Nichols chief.
Oh, okay.
I do too.
Yeah.
Once a chief, always a chief.
Yeah.
I'll fill in if things get out of control.
It would have been nice to have chiefs in Quaney here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. Congratulations and thanks all around.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five, back to the daily grind. Agenda item number five, consideration of resolution to recognize and appropriate $3,851.50 from the capital fund due to reimbursement transferring to the police clothing line. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Just wonder if you're gonna shoot down his first official. Agenda item number six, resolution to recognize and appropriate $6,500 in donations to the Community Oriented Policing Trust account. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Katie Siliman, discussion. All those.
Oh. If I may, um, what's missing on there is these are donations from Walmart. And actually, as of today, um, we have $750 more to add to that total.
Wow. Nice.
Very.
Seventy-two hundred? Seventy-two fifty.
Seventy-two fifty.
I'm looking at the stack here. Very kind of them. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries. And agenda item number seven, resolution to adopt the 2021 miscellaneous revenue budget incorporating following expenditures. Uh, $10,000 to the tree fund, $20,000 to go into the sidewalk repair fund, $12,500 to the Cortland Regional Sports Council, $5,000 to the downtown music series, and $500 to cover administration and advertisement for some of these said programs. And then that totals $48,000. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. And agenda item number eight, we have a presentation, and I'm looking for Bruce Adams on my screen. Bruce, uh, did I do it right? Can you, uh, share a screen? You have hosting ability.
Well, let's find out.
But we have. But we have presentation on the dairy waste to biogas to electricity at the Cortland wastewater treatment facility.
All right, uh well, I want to uh thank uh uh Bruce Titler for the invitation to uh present this information and they uh be careful what you ask for. Uh the mayor has asked that this be like a 20-minute uh presentation. I I'll confess, I haven't actually done a run-through, so let's find out what happens. All right, so as you know, we did a combined heat and power project, meaning that we generate uh biogas and use that to feed uh uh an engine that drives a generator that creates electricity. Uh we use electricity and also uh reclaim heat from the engine. Uh so the way this started was when we were looking at the major plant upgrade for the Chesapeake Bay compliance, uh we had envisioned a fairly modest sewage heap that would take advantage of the existing biogas from our sewage sludge. Uh but then uh Burn Dairy came around looking to get into the Greek yogurt market and uh they liked the industrial park that Cortland County IDA had created and bought the whole thing. And uh one thing that they very much uh were interested in was whether the wastewater plant would have the capacity to treat their wastewater. We did. They also asked the city to take a look at the possibility of taking and treating the acid whey, which is a byproduct of the Greek yogurt manufacturing process. Uh so uh we did, uh that is to say Cedarwood Engineering did. Uh they looked at a number of different anaerobic digester technologies, but ended up going with the old tried and true complete mix, uh which is what we actually had have had on site uh since about 1940. Uh so anaerobic bacteria in the digesters produce biogas uh as a byproduct of uh of of their uh metabolism. And uh that biogas tends to be 60 to 65% methane and therefore can be used as a fuel. Uh we had for many, many years uh used it in uh boilers to produce heat for heating the digestors themselves uh and also to provide uh supplemental plant heat in the winter. Uh biogas, however, is very high in moisture and it contains hydrogen sulfide uh which can turn into uh sulfuric acid. Uh and so it can be very damaging to burn in engines untreated. Uh also, uh biogas from uh sewage sludge tends to contain siloxane. And siloxane is a family of chemicals in personal care products like shampoos and things like that. Uh they serve as brighteners. What happens though is when you combust them in an engine, uh they will form a glass-like deposit on all the surfaces. So uh siloxane can uh be very problematic. As far as paying for this project, uh we landed a $2 million grant through NISERTA. They uh they had been doing anaerobic digester to get to electricity projects associated with farms for quite a few years. And uh then they opened it up to wastewater treatment plants and uh we got in on that for $2 million. Uh we also got Burn Dairy to sign a contract uh to deliver an amount of whey uh sufficient to operate the dig to operate the generator uh at uh near full capacity for the life of the bond or be on the hook for the bond payments. Uh National Grid pays for the exported electricity. We anticipated uh being able to produce more electricity than we needed at the plant. Uh we were looking at reduced electricity and uh natural gas costs. Uh however, you know, there's always uh gotchas and we've have come across some gotchas as well. Uh NISERTA reimbursement, yes, we got the $2 million grant, uh but holy smokes, it is like trying to pry open that last can of beans to actually get the money out of them. Now I'm told, and I got this straight from uh Marty Hubbard, the mayor of Skinni Ellis, who has been through this before. He said, NISERTA is good for the money, they really are. You'll just feel like you'll die of old age before you finally get it, but we're still working on it. Uh we'll get the money. Uh acid whey, which is the byproduct that we've been taking, is highly corrosive. Uh as supplied it has like a pH of three. Uh so it can be very damaging to uh the tanks, the pipes, the equipment. Uh so that has been very interesting to deal with. Uh the biogas cleaning system that we ended up getting uh is supplied by a company in Oregon. And that has proven to be uh problematic in terms of arranging for uh service and uh you know, being able to call them in a timely manner when we do have a problem. Uh because of the dairy waste that we're taking, we have uh increased the amount of sludge we're producing. Historically, prior to this project, uh we pretty regularly generated about 2,500 wet tons of sludge. Uh we have last year gone over 5,000 wet tons. Uh whey does not smell good, believe you me. Uh so we've had some issues with odors. Uh we've been dealing with them. Uh you know, obviously, we don't want to offend our neighbors. We we are in very close uh with residential neighborhoods. So we've definitely been uh doing our best to stay on top of those. Uh the maintenance contract for the generator is quite expensive, nearly $10,000 a month. Uh but the engine is a very expensive investment and it is worth it to uh keep it in tip-top shape. And the company that we went with uh is is really very knowledgeable. They have a technician based out of Syracuse and uh he's able to service our needs very quickly. Uh so we've been very happy with that company. As far as what went into the project, uh we had to have a tank to receive the dairy waste. Uh we had to rehab our 1940s digesters. We had to put up a new digester, install the biogas cleaning system, put in the generator, and put in the heat capture system. So for the whey receiving, we repurposed an old sludge thickener tank and uh put in a protective coating to protect the concrete from the acid whey. Uh we installed mixing so that uh it wouldn't stratify and settle out. Uh we had to heat it so that the fat content would not congeal on the sides of the tank. Uh and we uh we had to adjust the pH. As I said, the acid is very harmful. Initially, we were using caustic soda, uh but that was very expensive and not sustainable. We have since come up with uh the idea of returning digested sludge into the whey tank uh in order to uh uh bring the pH up above five, uh which everything that we installed is rated for. And that has been working very well, uh and is no additional cost past the equipment uh and program that was necessary to put it in place. Uh the digester rehab, uh this is our uh digester complex dating back to 1940. So we installed new mixing systems, uh a new gas storage system. That big white bubble in the back is a dual membrane style uh that holds the biogas as it's being produced. Uh the, all of the gas handling equipment, the piping, the uh flame arresters and all of that uh was way out of date. Uh so we uh improved all of that, replaced it with a new larger diameter stainless steel. And uh we were able to adapt our existing heating system uh through some inventive uh automated valving. Uh and so saved uh saved money on that. We also installed a new digester uh with a 500,000 gallon capacity, which is equal to all of the other three digesters that we had before. It's a post-tensioned concrete panel design, which was very interesting. They put all those panels up in two days uh and then tensioned them with uh cables. Uh the panels themselves are made in a climate-controlled factory, so uh you know, they they had full control over it. Uh sometimes when you pour this stuff on site, you run into uh difficulties. Uh so all of our digesters are fed with a mix of sewage sludge and dairy waste, and we have found that that works very well. Uh because if you try to do a single stream, like if we if we said that the new digester would only handle the dairy waste, you get into problems with uh micronutrients uh not being there. The biogas cleaning system is uh, as I said, that's uh supplied by an Oregon company. It's it's a good system. Uh it just took a while to get everything uh up and running right. So it's designed to remove the hydrogen sulfide, the moisture, and the siloxane. Uh the initial H2S is removed biologically in that tall tower. Uh then in the squat white tower, there's uh media to polish the H2S uh out of the uh biogas. Moisture removal uh is done by passing it through a refrigerated heat exchanger. And then uh we have uh special media to remove the siloxane. The generator itself uh is a uh 500 KW uh gen set. Uh and we put it in a sound attenuating enclosure. Because we're so close to the neighbors, we didn't, you know, obviously, you don't want to uh keep them up with a throbbing engine all night. It is tied to the utility grid so that uh as we produce more energy than we're using at the plant, it goes out on the grid. It's metered, we get a credit for it uh every uh every month. And uh again, the uh maintenance contractor, very important. Uh so we went with a company called Martin Energy. Uh they're out of Pennsylvania and they are outstanding. Heat reclamation, so the, you know, just like a radiator in your car, the engine makes a lot of heat and it goes and runs coolant through a uh uh through a radiator basically. And one of those uh radiator loops goes back into our boiler room. These are the pumps that drive that loop. And so that is tied into our plant-wide hot water system. And so we can use that heat for the for the uh digesters uh and also uh plant heat in the winter. Uh and obviously, that reduces how much natural gas we have to buy from NISEC. So benefits of the project, greenhouse gas reduction. As I pointed out in my report last month, uh we have in 2000 had a 95% reduction in electrical uh draw and therefore greenhouse gas production uh over uh the prior 10 years. Uh utility cost reduction, if we're not drawing it, we're not paying for it. Um we uh help make a local employer uh, you know, get a competitive advantage. We have an agreement with Burn Dairy where uh we accept their acid whey from the Cortlandville facility only uh at no cost in observance of the value of the electricity that is uh created from the biogas. Uh grid resiliency, as you know, this is a a big push of uh state government is to try to do grid resiliency. And one of the ways of doing that is uh distributed generation. So you know, by pushing in energy from many different uh locations in the grid, uh you're not stressing it. You know, you you're you're taking the stress off of the large uh main transmission lines. And uh finally, promoting Cortland as a green community. You know, this is, this is kind of a big thing. In 2015, a greenhouse gas survey showed that the wastewater treatment plant alone accounted for 75% of electricity used by city government. And uh we've knocked off 95% of that. Uh so a lot of people were involved in this. So big thanks to uh Burn Dairy and Gary Van Gorder of the Industrial Development Agency. Uh State Senator Jim Seward, who was instrumental in making that uh that grant from NISERTA possible. Uh the council and the administration for your support through this whole thing. Cedarwood Engineering and Kestner Associates for the design and implementation of the project. And of course, Ed Poole and all of our staff down at the POTW uh for keeping the thing running uh in great uh order. Thank you.
Good.
That went pretty quick.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Nice job.
My pleasure.
Bruce, are we, do we still get whey once a week or whatever it was from uh, is it Chobani or Shob?
Uh I raised Chobani's tipping fee and they have decided they don't like us anymore. I'm okay with that because we are getting enough dairy waste to drive our uh generator. Any more than that just causes us additional tipping fees.
I know, I know you had mentioned that before, but with only being able to do Zoom, I kinda lost track because I mean, are we still currently getting it or did they finally stop then when you raised the tip?
Uh yeah, we 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 have an agreement uh in place, but they don't seem to be too interested in taking advantage of it.
Okay. Just was, just was curious.
Hey, I have a, I have a quick question, Bruce. Did you say we reduced our utility cost over there by 95%?
No, I said we reduced our u our electricity draw on national grid.
Okay. Do we, do we turn any power back into that grid at all?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and we get about 5 cents a kilowatt hour for it. Uh you know, going into it, one of, one of National Grid's engineers had suggested that uh gee, you know, because it's renewable, you could get up to 11 cents. Oh, that would be awesome. Yeah, would've been.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Good job, I had no idea how much science was behind what you're doing down there. It's amazing.
Any further questions, comments for Mr. Adams?
This is a really excellent project, thanks for, thanks for carrying it through.
Oh, my pleasure, it's uh, you know, it's it's really uh, it should be a point of pride for this community.
It is, it really is. How many years has it been now, Bruce, since we started this project?
Um, I think the CHP got started about 2015.
And the greenhouse um emissions being so small, that's just amazing, fantastic.
And it all started because we were trying to clean up what we put into the feeder to the Chesapeake Bay, correct?
Uh right, that was the driver for the for the upgrade in the first place.
Yeah, so it went far beyond that.
You know, and and these these infrastructure, this infrastructure, sometimes I don't think everybody in the community understands how important it is. And you think about, we were able to to get a uh major business in here because we had the infrastructure capacity. You know, so going forward, you know, it it really is to the city's advantage to constantly, we need to constantly be upgrading the um our our infrastructure. You know, that's one of those things we just can't leave behind. And uh
Yeah.
All the people that came before me, you know, I I certainly appreciate that.
I have to say, I give credit to Mac, he is the one who really, you know, uh educated me about the use of wastewater treatment capacity as an economic development tool, and it really is.
So at this point, you're not interested or seeking out additional materials because of the sludge? But is there significant capacity? Should, should opportunities arrive and um biosolids management or sludge management uh in become enhanced?
Uh not, not with our existing system. Uh we are uh authorized by DEC to take up to 30,000 gallons per day of dairy waste. And we're typically really close to that, so we don't really have a lot of extra capacity. Um it would be interesting at some point to look into ways to uh augment, you know, without necessarily a huge new project, but to augment uh what is there to see if we could take things like uh, like you say, like food waste. Cause I think, you know, food waste can can definitely feed an anaerobic digester.
Absolutely, I've seen quite a few projects that are doing that. And especially with the state's food waste ban coming onward at the beginning of next year.
Yeah, and there might be uh state grant monies available once that, because you know, there's gonna be a press. You know, i- if you're not gonna allow it in landfills, you have to, you have to come up with some way to deal with it.
Yeah, that's correct.
And it, and I anticipate that the biosolids management end of things will also be a component for that, for the food waste diversion with the state. And it, and I anticipate that the biosolids management end of things will also be a component for that, for the food waste diversion with the state.
So Bruce, thank your team down there for everything you folks are doing. We appreciate it and um, you know, it's really it's saving the city some money and, and, and it's helping to do our part to save the environment and it's uh so the unsung heroes, you know, those, those folks, I don't think they get the recognition for the contributions they make to the city all the time because they're definitely behind the scenes, so thank them, please.
I will pass your thanks along.
Absolutely.
For all of us.
Indeed.
All right, any further questions? Very good, outstanding work. Uh, agenda item number nine, and in the interest of transparency, we just had one, we're going to screen share one more time. Counsel, we're going to, I'll ask for, well, we have it as discussion and if you're comfortable, then I'll ask for resolutions that we can forward to the great state of New York, our response to the governor's executive order number two zero three. What we have here is several documents that have been pulled together. The meat and potatoes of this is six pages long, and then we've included the appendices and the appendices, different information from stakeholders to uh give additional information about how we got, where we got. Um, so the first section, introduction, much thanks to uh Bruce Titler for writing the introduction and I've to take the different pieces and make them fit, I had some minor edits. Just more, like I said, to make it fit than anything else, but the explanation of the EO two oh three collaborative, these were the meetings that the city partook in along with the Village of Homer and several community stakeholder groups. And it's important to note that this is where a lot of our recommendations come from. Because we were able to hear the voices of people that otherwise may not really have been heard. Uh, so there were some robust discussions, there was an opportunity for some good listening and I'm very pleased that we had not just the chief and the deputy chief participate. Bruce Titler, thank you as well, the four of us. I, I missed several due to day job conflicts, but uh from the city's team, we were able to participate and I have to give a lot of credit to members from the community who were taking time out every two weeks and for a couple of hours and, you know, they're volunteering and their time and effort was greatly appreciated, is greatly appreciated. And we also talked about that there were some recommendations that are things that we already do, but we ve- we valued them as being important enough that we wanted to emphasize going forward their importance. So there's six bullet points there. De-escalation, when there are incidents. Uh, engaging and involving social workers where appropriate when there's a call. Uh, the department do fol- does follow up with complainants after incidents. These were questions and concerns that came forward. And the last three, policy that addresses officer behavior off duty, uh use of social media by our department off duty as well, and uh what else do they um, what other affiliations may people have, and it's important to note that we're not trying to limit people's individual freedoms. But when you take on a job and a responsibility like law enforcement, you want the general public to have the utmost confidence that our officers are uh doing their best to treat everybody equally and equitably. Virtual listening sessions, there were three to the general public and then one that was geared towards college students, both TC three and SUNY Portland. And then we had the anonymous community survey, much thanks to the chief for bringing forward that idea. And then Dr. Canito Colville from SUNY Portland Sociology Department was in excellent collaboration and partnership and it went, I think, very well. There's some questions that came out of that. And she was willing to have another informational session actually just last Monday. And the, the survey was beneficial, but we also knew that the survey by itself would not give us a true representation of everybody in the community. That's why we had the open meetings. And just as if not more importantly, the collaboratives so that all voices were heard. So then we get right to it, the recommended changes. And these are the same things that have been discussed. Um, I think I had two for medical adjustments. But the main sections, talking about the police commission, adding membership to the commission. Uh, civilian review of disciplinary matters, not having the commission involved when there is disciplinary issues. Uh, basically becoming informed with disciplinary issues within the department. Hearing concerns regarding officer performance, basically being another conduit for people to express their concerns. And also talking about attracting, making sure that we keep highly qualified individuals as member, members of the commission. Uh, whether or not there should be some compensation, something for a discussion that will, with approval of this, come to council's discussion within the next month or two. Section two, discussion about community oriented policing. This was something that over not just discussions with the collaborative, but the surveys and, you know, anecdotally uh our, our community values knowing who the officers are. And um fact is that the community size of ours, having officers that know people and interact on a frequent basis, it benefits our officers, it benefits our whole community. So we talked about increased interaction with the public and maybe you need to talk a little bit more and in terms of implementation, but we want to encourage and recognize and reward when officers go the extra mile and they do things that further create bonds between members of the public and law enforcement. There's discussion about the expectations for the SRO, School Resource Officer. And we're going to increase the number of meetings to discuss what the expectations are of the SRO, and that would be between the mayor, the police chief and the superintendent for the school district. In terms of presence at events and crowd control, working with event organizers. And one of the things I mentioned earlier, de-escalation being the primary goal of conflict situations, it's already there, but we are reemphasizing that. And that helps make sure that everybody knows what we're expecting of one another. Section three, reviewing officer performance. And this, the first one, citizen review of complaints refers back to the police commission. And we're reaffirming and empowering our volunteers, our community members on the commission uh to make sure that it's, if there are disciplinary complaints and issues that they are reviewed by citizens who are outside of the department. Talk about whistleblower protections when there are complaints. Uh, again, reiterating what is already practiced, but making sure that everybody understands that yes, we value and make sure that everybody understands not only do we value, but we know the importance of making it safe for people to come forward if they have issues or concerns with the behavior of others. Use of force, and I believe this is one of the sections, I think, chief, this is where I need to do a uh slight change of verbiage. But we talk about that there's a continuum of force, but there is also the opportunity to recognize when officers choose not to go farther along with regard to force and they're able to successfully de-escalate. So it can be a way for us to recognize and appreciate officers that are doing a fine job and making sure that they are uh keeping situations from becoming potentially more hazardous. And um the next two, off-duty behavior comportment and display of sign symbols that are not department approved. Uh, times are changing, we don't know what will be. You know, we know it's current, but different symbols and different uh ways of expressing one's opinions, we want to make sure that we are keeping our police department the way they have been, and that's professional in the eyes of the public and that we are as open to everybody in the public as we can be. Section four, the hiring and promotional process. We want to work on creating a more diverse workforce. And that's going to need to mean that we need to be a little bit more aggressive in how we recruit candidates. And that will benefit the department and it'll benefit the whole community, because the better, stronger the applicant pool and the better the applicants are. And at the end of the day, the stronger the force. Reinforcement of appropriate culture within the department, there is current guidelines and we know that those will continue. And with the new chief, there may be some changes, but that is something that is important. Recognition and incentives, so events, recognitions, other ways to show a recognition. Um, we want, and this was again expressed throughout the community, that it's the city's desire for community oriented police force, one that engages with citizens. And there, there was a suggestion that I think goes very well and if it's in the report, if it's not, I've, I, I do believe we need to have discussion with chief and with membership of our department about what they view as appropriate ways to be recognized. And appropriate ways for people to show and voice their support. And over the past year, I think most of us know there's been some conflict and there's been different ways that people have wanted to express or show their support for law enforcement and some of those ways don't necessarily jive well with the entire community. So I'd like to sit down with our uh administrative staff in the police department and also with members of the department and get a better understanding of what it is that they would like to see. And then I'd be glad to form a liaison with a certain group in the community that purportedly wants to support our law enforcement, but may not be doing it in the most effective manner. So I'd like to bridge that gap and I think we can support law enforcement and not do it at the expense of how some feel, and that's important. That is absolutely critically important. And then section five, procedures, accuracy of reporting. Uh, making sure that, and this is a reaffirming, that we are making sure that reports, when they are taken, there's confirmation that the information is correct. Closure from incidents, uh some discussions about finalizing when something is done that the complaint is followed up on. And we know that happens a lot of times, but we also know that some incidents that result in action, it can take a long time. Uh, so making sure that people are aware that, hey, this did not disappear, it did not fall off the plate, that sometimes if it takes more time than we may expect, that we may need to get back to people so they know that the wheels are, the wheels of justice are still turning. The survey we mentioned, public feedback, like to do that at least every four years and there's been suggestions. Uh, we could, and whether or not we should would be a question maybe for council to answer, if we should do a citywide survey instead of a stratified sample. And there's different things that can be done with surveys. But we want to continue to do that because it's one way to keep our finger on the pulse of the public and what the opinions and views are for law enforcement. And then collection, sharing of data from incidents. Police commission, working with the chief, working with uh the mayor going forward in terms of what type of information is being gathered. Video and audio recordings, we talk a lot about body cams, but you know, we stepped back and said, let's talk about video and audio in general. And there seemed to be a fair amount of support in terms of body cams, so now the next task, if that's something the council wants to get behind, we have to talk about how do we get there? And the dollar sign is the biggest obstacle, I think, at this point. Because it's not just the cameras, it's also the server and the personnel in terms of maintenance. And the personnel in terms of being able to find videos, once they're logged, there will be a lot of videos in the system. Training of officers, and there's a lot of trainings that are required, but we want to talk about what is above and beyond. And soliciting for public input, what is it that the community wants to see our officers trained in and also the department, what are their interests? And the last two, absolutely critical, and some might uh assume that we're just talking about the health of officers, both physical, uh mental and emotional well-being. And we are talking about the health of officers, but it impacts when, when somebody has a traumatic event or if they're stressed, it impacts their ability to do the job. And I can say that about myself, stress sometimes is not an improver of job performance. And we want all of our employees to be in a good place. And in particular, if there are stressful events on the job, off the job, there's times where we need to fight the stigma in terms of people potentially having assistance emotionally or mentally. And we want to continue to advocate for the well-being of our, all of our employees and with EO two oh three specifically, law enforcement, that we are putting them in the best place to be healthy while they're employed and also afterwards. So we get into the appendices, there's a list of people that were invited in terms of the EO two oh three, and I can add affiliations that we're here in terms of what the roles were for different people. Um, the collaborative report, so really appreciate the work from a couple of members, in particular Christina Fury, Melissa Kaiser, and then Samantha Adams did quite a bit of writing and um you know, I beg forgiveness because I'm not mentioning everybody. But I know that the collaborative report, in addition to the immediate recommendations that we are putting forward, the goal here, um, long-term and aspirational recommendations. So basically saying, hey, we're not just treating this like a sprint and we're done with this, we can continue to have discussions and look at what we're doing and how we are working best so that service is providing the community the way that the community wants the service to be provided. Um, this will all be in the final report. Recommendations, leadership and culture, and council, you did get this, I believe it was March fifth from all the uh council member Bruce Titler, Bruce, thank you for helping organize and share all this. And when this is approved, final form, it will be shared on our website as well. Appendix C, public survey, this was the information from the sociology professor at SUNY Portland, I do need to include that. And then my notes, I took names out and left initials to uh give anonymity to the people that did speak. But all the comments from those meetings are included. And Chief Catalano, thank you, chief. His, and I gotta put this on its own page because I didn't format it. I'm impressed with his ability to use, I don't know, it's just cutting and pasting, but putting the logos on there. I need to take a class. And chief put in his thoughts. Talked about policy and procedure, departmental training, subject management, use of force, community oriented policing and neighborhood engagement, dealing with mental hygiene situations, citizen and internal complaints, and then info about statistical data collection. And I, I found this to be very useful, in particular if we have people that have questions about what we currently do. Uh, chief gave his perspective on EO two oh three. And talks about what was addressed in the plan, so this document can stand on its own, but it complements so well with what we've done. Um, and it talks about, I believe it was mentions, well, if it was not mentioned, the six pillars of community policing down here. Building trust and legitimacy, which is something everybody in government needs to do these days. Policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing, crime reduction, training and education, officer wellness and safety. And if you think back, we are hitting, I think, every pillar with our recommendations. Talked about re- reaccreditation, we are accredited, which means we are already achieving some of the highest standards, not just in New York state, but in the country. And he talks about the different areas where some of this is met. It's more in depth with regard to department training. And it's helpful because a lot of people don't understand, but we are requiring officers twenty-one hours of annual training. That's what's already required, twenty-one hours. And there's the list in terms of what is included there. Discrimination, harassment, complaints and investigations, anti-bias policing, part one and two. CPR, oh, I got a typo there. Automated external defibrillation. So our officers are trained in the events of a potential cardiac emergency to perform cardio pulmonary resuscitation and then AED is that thing that you hooked up to somebody's chest. And if there is a problem with the electrical rhythm with somebody's heart, it can help to bring about a more consistent rhythm.
The mayor in the sentence under that?
Yes.
Yeah, just was hoping that you would highlight how many hours they are averaging.
We're on the same page. Yeah, I uh also are in accordance to decent, yes, 21 hours and then down here. Currently averaging 109 hours of training per officer per year. 109 hours a year currently in terms of training. And 4,796 hours of in-service throughout the department as a whole. It's a number that I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around. That's a lot of hours. Um, information about in 2021. And in terms of training, updates on policies. So some of these things, they happen quietly every year, but policies are being reviewed and updated, not just annually, but when there are change, uh, when there are changes. Um, so if New York state makes a change in terms of what is or is not legal, the department needs to make that change when the state makes the adjustment. Information about subject management, use of force. Uh, community oriented policing, neighborhood engagement. And chief, when I'm done, if you'd like to make some comments, and probably, I apologize, I should have just let you go through this. It would have been a like a smarter move. And organizational transformation, there's a change that happens and being able to make the change.
You're doing a good job.
Well, you, you made it simple. You put this together very well. It's very detailed and easy to read. Drug addiction, dealing with mental hygiene, dealing with the public, mental health. Um, and we used to call it the emotionally disturbed, disturbed persons response team, but now the crisis intervention, intervention training or intervention tra-team. And majority of our officers are trained in that area, uh, and it's not mandatory, but highly encouraged. Talked about citizen and internal complaints. Chief, I think everybody's probably bored of me speaking, so your thoughts?
Well, I, I'm, I'm good with um these recommendations and um luckily, we, we've had Deputy Chief Sandy work alongside, so there's no surprises for him when he takes over next week, but um, I've said more than once, there, there's a lot of um misunderstanding, um, you know, what we actually do do and how we do things. So I thought that this document was important to be able to show some of the things that we do, do and have been doing for a long time. Um, and most of it falls in line with being in a, a New York state accredited agency and um that was a big step when we were accredited in 2016. And we are in our re-accreditation process this year. So um, with, with all the collaborative work of everybody in the department, I'm sure that we can get that done. Uh, but you, we touched on a lot of areas that um were the basis of EO two oh three from the governor. Um, but if anybody has any questions on how we operate in the police department, go back towards the beginning and read our mission statement and value statement, and that's what we live by. Um, but the report pretty much stands up for itself and as we go forward with the new chief, um, he'll be able to work with that and hopefully provide even more for the community.
Good. It's okay with everybody. I'd like to stop screen sharing because then I can see people. And then open the floor for council, comments, questions. Mayor Katie has her hand up, mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, Katie.
Okay, um, I really liked the switch from warrior to guardian. As far as the police and their like mindset in policing in the community. And I, I like the idea of encouraging people on our police force to live within our communities so that they are known as neighbors and people that you bump into at the grocery. Um, that's, I think that's all wonderful. And my question is, how much were the rank and file involved in this report? And how much do they embrace it now that it's completed?
So I can
Most of what was in the report is already a policy that we have. So there were no surprises um as far as the report goes. Um, with the recommendations, um, I, I have not pulled the department, um, what their feelings are on them. Uh, but they are, the recommendations were out there for them to look at. And the bottom line is, um, the leadership of the police department has to present what's, what's given and explain why. That goes with any order or policy that's ever put out. Um, you just can't put it out. You have to have an explanation as to why. Um, and there's always, there's always a room for feedback. And if we have to change or adjust policies, we do that.
Thank you.
Um, and mayor?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have a question so much as I, I'd like to just comment on this whole process. Um, I, I have to tell you this, we have an amazing community. This community is just incredible. When I see how many people stepped up to be part of the input into this, the recommendation to this report. We had numerous people representing uh some of our more marginalized um community members at these meetings. Um, you know, the, the, as Chief Catalano just said, he and Deputy Chief Sandy were involved. There were, we actually started this, Katie, you remember, in your backyard, even before the governor said we needed to move on it. We were already thinking about do we have the de-please department that we think we have? And by and large, we do, and it's been proven by the, all the community input and by your public meetings, mayor, and by the community survey. And at the same time, we found some weaknesses that we said, okay, we need to, we need to work on these. These need to be part of our, our thought process going forward. Uh, for instance, it came out loud and clear, the community wants to meet their officers. They're, they're only about five of them live in the community, I think, and they, they just, people just don't know them and they want to know them. And they want to get to know them and, and, and interact with them. So, so there were a lot of people involved in this. This, this, these recommendations truly are the community's recommendations. They are grassroots. They came from the bottom up. They were not from the top down. And the chief and, and the deputy chief were involved and, and there were a lot of uncomfortable conversations that we had to have through this process as we were moving through this. And, and I just want to thank everybody that was involved. There's, there's really too many to name, but you know, the folks that came to those meetings every two weeks since, you know, September, I think. Thank you all. Amazing folks. We had a lot of different perspectives and things on the table and all the people in the community that zoomed into the public meetings that we were having, the public hearings and voiced their opinions on things and you know, and I also want to, you know, Chief Catalano, you, you were stand up through this whole thing. This was a very difficult and lengthy process and you you, you showed the real leadership, you and Deputy Chief Sandy and um, you know, had to listen to some very difficult um conversations and be involved with some difficult conversations. And so, you know, leadership matters and you, your leadership helped move this process along. So I, I just want to say again, mayor, this is a community, this, this is a community document and it's been a heavy lift and it's been a long road and I, I look forward to, you know, what we have going forward. I think, I think the community is going to be uh, um, but I know it will, we'll be better off for it. I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Bruce. Further comments, questions, council? In order for us to officially meet the state's requirements, there are five main areas and reading right from the big book. Uh, summarize, local government, have we performed a comprehensive review? And I would say that we have. Number two, develop the plan, and this will have to be attached. And I believe we've developed a very good plan. Number three, consulted with stakeholders and it says included but not limited to members of the police force. The community emphasis in areas uh of air, areas where there's high interactions. Um, also involving interested nonprofit and faith-based community groups. Number four, two, three, four, offer the plan for public comment and five, the legislative body at a local government ratifying or adopting the plan by local law resolution. So number five would be the only step that council uh is still outstanding. And if we are comfortable, I would like to ask for supportive resolution to approve the city of Cortland's response to the governor's executive order two zero three. Bill Carpenter, second Bruce Titler, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the uh report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries? Very good. And again, a big thank you to everybody. Uh, and when I say everybody, you know, it is a community effort and I'll echo Bruce's statements and things that if not paraphrasing appropriately, chief, please tell me, but we, we do a lot of things well, but we're always striving to be better. And when we start to sit back and say, okay, well, we're good enough, that's when uh, we need to be concerned. But this represents a opportunity and the effort for us to continue to improve what we do.
I, I, I want to give kudos to those who helped out with this because last year, there was a lot of moving parts with a lot of issues that we had to deal with, and this was just one of them. Um, with the COVID pandemic and, and so many other things going on. So you, you didn't know which one you needed to put at the top of the list any given day, but um through everybody's effort, we, we worked at it all and we got through it and I think we're going to be in good shape starting April 1st, because April 1st is going to bring up a lot of new laws and challenges for the police department and the new chief. And I'm sure we're going to be up close.
Very good.
Brian?
Uh, yes.
Can I just address Katie? Um, her question, uh, the, I've talked to a number of our officers about these and I've had input um from them. Um, there is no pushback on these. Um, they are embracing them. Some of these things are actually um being implemented as we speak. Um, like monthly training logs to show what our people are doing every month. Who's getting trained, what they're getting trained in and so forth. We've had discussions on uh the community policing. Um, there's a little bit of concern about the 20 minutes every two hours when we're busy, but we will do our best. And we will, um, we are talking to nine one one about how we would record those so we can document that people are doing their best to get out there into the communities. So these things are already being embraced and um we will move forward with it.
Very much appreciate that. Thank you. Because if, if they, if they don't believe in it, it's not going to happen. So really appreciate their, their efforts to change what needs to be changed and to keep doing what they were doing well to begin with.
As the chief explained, we have a very professional force and they are committed people and um these are not heavy lifts. Um, they are not drastic changes from what we currently do. I think it's been an education process, modeling for the men and women of this agency, but for some of the community to see what we already do. Thanks to Chief Catalano's push for accreditation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Our, two, two more things, last official agenda item discussion regarding COVID-19 and then an executive session. The COVID-19, as many of us may recognize, tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day and I'm asking and encouraging everybody to be responsible. I, I know that as holidays are coming up and we're getting good news with regard to vaccination rates and even better news with regard to the drop in infections, not just in our community, but we're seeing and hearing it throughout our state. We, we still need to take care, practice our precautions. And as we get into this year, I'm optimistic that, hey, this summer, things that we used to have that we had to forego in 2020, we're going to be able to participate, but we need to make sure that for the short term, we continue to keep our eye on the prize. And that's wearing the mask, that's keeping our hands clean, maintaining appropriate physical distance. And if we're able to do that throughout our community, we're going to continue to see these numbers come down. And we've taken strong action with people who have not behaved themselves appropriately. And I hope that we're not going to have similar repeats. Um, so the message though is out there and it doesn't matter if we're talking year-round residents who grew up here, people who have moved from someplace else and have chosen to make Cortland their year-round home. Or if it's people that are choosing to live here for only a couple of months at a time. We are treating everybody consistently and fairly because we're all concerned about each other. And that's what happens in a community.
Mayor Tobin?
Yes, Katie.
Speaking of um St. Patrick's Day, I was disappointed to hear that the St. Charles Hotel went ahead and painted a shamrock in front of their establishment again this year despite what we all said about not painting the street. And so, um, it was brought to my attention by a constituent. And I'd like to know what we're going to do about it.
All right, I will follow up.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor Tobin?
Yes.
Mayor, I, I echo everything you just said in terms of, let's, let's keep looking out for each other. Well said. Thank you for that. And I also want to let folks know, I, I, I was able to get the first dose of my, of the vaccine on Sunday. And uh, good for you, Rick. And um, it, it, you know, I, I, my arm felt worse after a tetanus shot. So I encourage everybody that can get a vaccine, get the vaccine, please. You know, there's the lady was, I hardly felt it and my arm, you know, I had a little, was a little sore for a day, but I'm not kidding you, they felt worse after a tetanus shot. So all those fears, I, I, I want to put, at least for me, I can put those to rest. None, nothing materialized. Here I am, you know, feeling as good as ever and, and I, I encourage everybody to get a vaccine if you can. So like the mayor said, you know, better days are ahead and they'll be here sooner if we all do the things we need to do to keep each other safe. So um, just wanted to let folks know that I, I also, I did do, I did get the vaccine.
Very good.
They're much more available if you have, um, well, and I, I noticed that I got a a bulletin during the meeting that they have, um, more people who are now able to get the vaccine, but there are more and more clinics in the area. There's um just a lot of availability. So keep trying. If you were put off before, try again.
Very good. Positive news coming. We just need to make sure that we are still doing what we're supposed to. All right. I do not anticipate action after executive session, but I'd like a motion to adjourn into executive session. Katie Solomon, second Bill Carpenter, all in faith, this is regarding a contract with another municipality. Um, all Um, all in favor of adjourning into executive session, please say aye.
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 All right, like to entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session. John Bennett, Troy Beckwith, uh, support. All those in favor of adjourning from executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, is there any further business to come before the council this evening?
No.
Katie Solomon?
Yes.
Yes. I was multitasking during the executive session. And the governor says, starting tomorrow, March 17th, most vaccination sites will be able to vaccinate any eligible New Yorker, no matter the category.
Oh, wow, that's great.
That is good.
Good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope everybody takes advantage of that.
Yeah, spread the word.
Yeah.
Very good. And that was, you got that alert?
Yeah, I get coronavirus updates from the governor's office.
Outstanding. Very good. Uh, now, is there any further business to come before the council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from Cat McCarthy with support from Katie Solomon, any discussion? You want to talk about it? All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, have a happy St. Patrick's Day. Uh, we are adjourned.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Forward to it.
Me too.
Keep steady.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
See you, Paul, congratulations.
Bye-bye.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.